Time it is and we'll have roll call, please.
Sure, Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Grineo is not quite here yet. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Yep.
And I believe our town attorney is present remotely.
Mike's here.
I I'm here and you should be here any moment.
Wow, you do talk.
Yeah, I found my voice. Ah, there he is.
Good boy.
That's why I waited to let him speak for once.
All right, discussion regarding upcoming twenty twenty-two council meeting schedule. Aaron.
Yes, let me try and get this to work here. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm sure most of you are aware of this, have seen it before. So each year we go ahead and approve a calendar for the following year um for our council meetings and our packet distribution. And it has our holidays, the dates that the town offices are closed. Previous years, we've also included study sessions on the third Tuesday of each month. And we've calendared them out when we've been doing that. Um, if we do not have that study session, then the clerk's office is doing a canceled notification, posting it in all three physical locations and online. So this year, um, I wanted to propose taking that study session off of the calendar and only scheduling them when needed. According to our town code, which I have too, it's not necessary to actually schedule them on the calendar. So I think it would be easier for you guys to just schedule them when we have, when we need them. And possibly talk about maybe prior to regular meetings.
This format that we have today, is everybody liking this format better than coming in this extra Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then Councilmember Armstrong.
Oh, I forgot about him. Tommy, are you there?
Yep, sounds good to me.
Okay. Um, and then the only other suggestion I was make is we remove July twenty-sixth and August ninth to give everybody a break over the summer. Like we did last summer, everybody appreciated that, am I correct?
Yes.
Especially the lake meat fishermen.
Yes.
And those going back to school.
Uh huh. So.
Twenty-sixth and ninth.
Twenty-sixth and ninth, August ninth will be a no meeting. Which will also cancel July twenty-one and August fourth for the agenda meetings.
For the packet distribution, you mean?
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah, just letting you know when the packets will be available.
It'll cancel that anyway. Seems that we're not gonna have a meeting. Anything else anybody has on that? None? Tom?
I'm fine with it. Sounds good, just like we did.
Okay.
So what I'll do is I'll make a final draft of this and I'll bring it back to the next meeting for you guys to vote on.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That's all you need. All right, item three, consideration discussion regarding U D O. One point four point two, powers and duties of planning and zoning commission, U D O committee function, discussion on guest house definition and possible placement. Permit on parcels relating to cargo container, cargo containers, cargo containers, excuse me. Lori?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Lori Library, your development services director. Um, when I started in July, I was on contract and I knew that I had like three months to try and straighten out the office before the new director came. And so I was um intentionally observant of issues and things that were going on. So at planning commission meetings and at council meetings, I listened to things that were going on in the audience. I was listening to applicants and and neighbors that came. And trying to understand what the issues were that were facing my department primarily. So there, I have a couple of things that I want to talk through with you tonight. I don't have the answers, I just want to um lay these things out here and see if it's something that you think that you're interested in me. Taking to the planning commission where we can vet these things further and then ultimately bring them back to you. So that's my goal for tonight. Um, I have four items and we have a short time period and I'm gonna keep looking at Will. I've asked Will to keep me on target. So one item is five minutes, one's fifteen, one's five, one's fifteen, so he, I'm, I'm gonna push us through. Doesn't mean I'm ignoring you or I don't want to hear you, but we need to get done by a certain time so we can reconfigure the room. So this isn't the only time you're gonna see any of this stuff, we'll be back, but I, I just wanted to. Start with a, with a sharing of concerns that I have and potential pathways for us and then get some feedback from you. So the first item is the U D O committee, which um is scheduled to meet like every month or so. And um at first I didn't understand what it was. And when I went into the U D O text, it actually has the planning commission having the, the authority to initiate changes to the U D O. So I was confused about what this other group was. And so Erin shared with me the um formation papers and the history. So I have some background on that. And what I would like to propose is that we put that committee on hiatus until we get through with the general plan, which is one of my major responsibilities. And when we get done with the general plan, that's when we'll look at the U D O and try and make lots of changes to make it um implement the general plan. So, so my suggestion would be that we put that on hiatus and we reconstitute it after we get the general plan done. My timeline for the general plan is to have a consultant team hired around March. It'll take about eighteen months to get that project done. It then needs to go to the voters. Um, but between us getting the plan done and waiting for the vote, then we can start working on the U D O.
Comments, questions?
So your thought on getting to that point, what is that date to where you may start back on the U D O approximately?
Um, I would say about two years.
Two years?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, just a comment on this, the whole, when the committee was formed with the U D O to look at things, it was mainly, we knew we need to work on the U D O.
Yes.
Um, and again, it was said, this is gonna take a while to get through this and make it happen. So we were looking for an avenue to deal with urgent things, things that maybe we couldn't or didn't want to wait two years. To make some changes to, just to help everybody as a whole in the community, uh as far as town staff and, and citizens. So just to give you my background on it.
Thank you, and we, we still have a pathway to, to make changes to the U D O in the meantime.
Okay.
What is that pathway?
I'm sorry?
What is that pathway?
It is in section one point four point two, under powers and duties of the planning commission. A four, it says that one of their responsibilities is to initiate changes to the town zoning map or the provisions of the U D O. So we haven't lost the ability to make those changes. I would just like to put that committee on hold as a committee.
Okay. Good.
That's what she's hired to do. I'm gonna let her do her plan and uh if there's things that come up, then we'll deal with them.
Absolutely. Awesome, thank you for that. So when you are new to a place, you have a really limited time where you actually see things. Um, after a period of time, everything becomes wallpaper and it's just the culture of where you're at. And so one of the things that was painfully apparent um for me. Was the complaints that, that I heard repeatedly at planning commission and council about how we were using the S R zero point one six. Um, district in the zoning code. When you go to that district, the first thing that's in a district is the purpose statement. And the purpose statement is really the key to how that whole ordinance is supposed to work. In this purpose statement, it says, it's not our intent to use this to make new zoning with this designation. That's real clear to me. And it's also clear to me that we were using, we are using this code to make more designations at this level. So I, I believe, looking at the purpose statement, that the purpose was not to create additional zoning at this level, the way we're doing it. And so I would propose that we take this, follow the purpose, take the designation, we'll tuck it into the nonconforming use section. And we will, after we get the general plan done and we know where we want higher density uses. Then we generate the, the districts that make sense for the size and the locations and the places. So we're not eliminating higher density, we need that in this community. Just right now, it's kind of hodgepodge where it goes and it doesn't necessarily do a good job of following water and sewer lines and any of the other infrastructure. That we need to have in place and um that's not a methodical way to look at um planning. So that would be my proposal for this, uh, you know, the planning commission hasn't heard this yet, I'm meeting with them next week, uh the same kind of discussion with them as well. I had to wait until we had all of our projects through the process before I took this stand. Um, as much as I wanted to stand up in front of you and say, we can't do this, in my opinion. Uh, we had cases that I had given, were given permission to move through using this pathway. And I needed to wait for those projects to make their way through the process. We have none in the link right now.
So no more point one six for right now, we're just gonna put a pause on it?
Right now, we have none submitted.
And you'd be talking about creating after the general plan is established, additional zoning districts in lieu of having that.
More, yeah, more dense. In the meantime, we're also going to, I mean, I'm working with the planning commission on half acres. And um, we'll be talking about quarter acre lots as well. And so we'll have those working in the meantime, but once we get the general plan done and we know where and what type. Then we can really look at the intensity and the specific locations and that's when we can create those districts that make sense for higher density.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's been primarily used to justify pads that are even quarter acre or half acres, right? That zoning district?
That is correct.
Okay.
But if we create those zoning districts so that they stand on their own, then you don't have to go through that process.
Now, does that mean a halt on um? The, well, how would that work actually if um someone wanted a half acre? They couldn't do the one acre uh minimum and if they couldn't do the point one six, would the half acre go in prior to resuming the point one six? Is that what we're talking?
I'm working right now with the planning commission on, we're trying to figure out, is it twenty thousand, is it twenty two, you know? So basically a half acre, um, and my hope is that that will come to you by February.
For the half acre?
Yes.
So anything less than half acre, we're not gonna do, just to clear my brain, we're not gonna do them for two years?
Well, I'm gonna work on a quarter acre uh district as well.
I mean, but what's our time span? So if somebody was planning, say, to do a sub, you know, subdivision in the next ninety days.
My goal is within ninety days actually to have these in place.
Oh, okay. I was understanding.
These two, the half acre and the quarter acre.
Okay.
Okay.
Half acre, yeah, let's, we're moving.
Okay. So I understand half and a quarter, but if they wanted a high density, they can't do anything until the U D.
The general plan.
General plan's done.
Now, there are places in town that already have the entitlements for that designation and they could come in and they could develop, absolutely. Just no new rezones for that.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. So if somebody had some property and it was already zoned for that, then they can continue.
Yes.
So it wouldn't hold up their project.
Absolutely.
Okay, I understand that better, thank you.
Okay, so is that something worth me talking to planning commission about?
I'd say so.
Yes. So, yeah, they might give you some additional insight too.
I think that's an excellent idea, go to P and Z and tell them exactly what's going on, figure out who's on first.
Okay, awesome, thank you, I appreciate the direction. And you guys are moving a lot faster than I expected, so rock, this is awesome. So my third item is guest houses and it wasn't that I was hearing complaints, it's just that. The definition that we have here for guest houses doesn't allow them to be rented to someone other than a family member. So I came from a community where we had just recently developed a text amendment that allowed guest houses to be built, because they hadn't even been allowed to be built. But, but they couldn't be occupied by someone other than a family member unless the property owner also lived in one of the units on the property. So they could either live in the guest house or they could live in the main house and then they could rent the other piece out and it didn't have to be to a family member. The reason that that was popular is because you're protecting the neighbors and property values. So you don't have absentee landlord for two lot, for two parcels on a lot. When you have the owner living there, things get taken care of when there's an issue. And it was very successful. Um, got some pushback from some people who want to just build a bunch of houses on lots and, you know, rent them from afar. But that's really when you lose the, the character of your community is when you turn it into absentee landlord stuff, so. So anyways, that is, my proposal to you is to allow me to go to the planning commission and change our definition. To remove that sentence that says that you can't rent it other than to your um household members, you can't rent it for income. And the other piece of that is that, that when the property owner comes in for a rental business license, that they would sign that they're going to live on the property on, on one of the units. So that's, might help with some housing issues that we currently have.
You got something, Chris?
Yeah, I drive around, look at a lot of the things, I do see a lot of extra going on throughout the community. And so that's of good interest. We seem to have the guest house and then assorted RVs and things in some of the areas, so it's worth addressing.
Okay. Okay, so the last one is something you guys.
I do have one question though, about violations, how would you enforce that? Owner moves and just rents it to the job load?
Every year, there's a, there's a business license that has to be obtained by the property owner if they're going to be renting. And they have to verify on that, 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 they have to verify on the business license application that they are the owner of the property and they will be living in one of the units on the property.
So the, the, the compliance aspect would be no reissuance of the license should they move out a day after they get the permit?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, really, I'd like us all to, to just be adults and do the right thing, I know that doesn't always happen, but I would like to assume that people will do that. And then if we have to do code enforcement, then we'll do code enforcement.
Okay.
So this next one is one that you guys um struggled with, uh, an issue that you guys have struggled with before. It was um metal storage containers. And uh, Will and I sat down with the, the staff report and other documents that you guys had previously. With some stuff that I had from a prior location and we picked things that worked together. We, we kept almost every single thing that you guys had before listed. We inserted a, a piece that's really key. When we initiated metal storage containers, we call them cargo containers in the last place that I worked. We did not require a building permit. We just had a land use permit, which means that you're measuring setbacks and you're making sure that it's located where it needs to be on the lot. They are for storage, we didn't allow any electrical or any plumbing. If you want a metal storage building, you can get a metal storage building to secure stuff. Where I was, we had, we had a higher density and so we had a lot more six, eight, ten thousand square foot lots. Here, we really do have enough space so that if you have a minimum of an acre, you can fit one of these units on your property someplace. And it won't be necessarily, depending on where you put it, obnoxious to your neighbor. So, so Will and I kicked around the idea of you have to have a minimum of an acre. For each full acre, you can have up to four hundred square, so you could have, you know, four hundred square feet of containers. Because we don't have an ag zoning, which I was used to, it's wrapped into our residential, that's why I don't call out ag, we, we wrap that into the residential piece. I can tell you that every week we have people that come into our department asking to be able to place these storage containers. And that works within limits and with the right guidance. So we can keep it how, how it is right now and we'll just keep telling people no, makes them really happy. Or we can try and create a pathway within parameters to allow people to have the secure storage that these units provide. So what I've done with Will's help is created this sheet with issues that came up the last time you guys worked through this. Um, and I think the biggest issue really was that we were wrapped around a, a building permit. If we don't have the building permit, then we don't have to get involved in all of the minutia of the building code. And I think that's where a lot of the problems occurred with you guys last time was that there, there's too much in the building code. And it gets too involved and there's too much minutia and it turns it from just a metal storage container into a structure. Where people want to put in windows and lights and a toilet and pretty, that's not a storage container. So if we have a storage container, we have a definition, which is the very first um item on your sheet, that's a definition of a storage container.
Hey, Tom, I sent this uh to your phone, so you should be able to look at it.
Yeah, just heard it beep, so I'll check it real quick, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Um, and we made specifically sure that that very last sentence was in there because that was an item of issue that Will said came up a number of times with people. Suggesting all these other creative ways to have storage on their lot, well, the idea is really that it's a metal storage container that's made for storage. It's not that you're gonna create, you're gonna take your camper shell off and turn it into a sort, that's, that's not what this is. The, the second piece is the definition of a land use permit, this is something that we do now um over the counter with sheds and things. Items that don't need a building permit, that don't qualify for building permit. The land use permit is what we do and we, we look at zoning and we look at setbacks for that. And it's an over the counter thing that we do. Um, so then the rest of this stuff is items that came up during discussion in the staff report in the minutes. Of the, the items when you guys were all talking about this before. So I've got listed that we have a land use permit, the metal storage containers are for storage only, there's no plumbing or electrical. You have an acre, you have a full acre, you can have four hundred square feet of metal storage container for each full acre, you can have another unit. They're permitted as accessory uses, so you have to have a primary use on the site, you can't just have a metal storage container sitting on property. Because that is not a permitted land use in the zoning code. So you have to have a primary use and then you can have a storage container on there. They can't be in parking spaces that are required, you can't have them in retention basins or drainage areas or flooding areas. One of the things that we did in my prior place was we allowed contractors and homeowners, if they had a building permit. For whatever was going on on their property, whether it was a commercial building or something residential, that you could bring in a container, even if you didn't have a full acre. And you could store your household belongings or whatever was going on with your building permit. And when your building permit was done, then you empty out that, that storage container because it's a temporary thing and you remove it from the site. So that's a, that's an option.
Oh, that's neat, my bad.
That's available for contractors and for um property owners. One of the things that did kind of trip us up here last time was about the, the painting. You wouldn't think that would be a big deal. But yes, it was a big deal. So I have, I have multiple options on here, which is why you have little boxes, so that you can mark things that you agree with or that you think make sense. And, and I can maybe take those and, and meet with the planning commission, we can vet that kind of stuff. So one of the things that we don't want to see is a, a used cargo container, as most of them are. With a company logo on it from the shipping company, you know? So the idea is that you get rid of land sea, land sea shipping isn't on the side of the cargo container anymore. Because it's not, it's not gonna be on a ship, it's gonna be in your yard. And so one of the things that was discussed here was you paint the container one color. I had a conversation, I don't remember if it was with you, yeah, and so. We, we weren't flexible enough to allow alternate paint options. It was a one, one and you're done. And I think that we need to have the flexibility for my staff to review alternate paint designs. So if you have a band that you want to put along the top that really would add to the aesthetics, that's a different color than the main uh paint color of the cargo container. You should be able to propose that. It can't be, it can't turn into a sign. So there's always those, you know, you can do this, but you can't do that, you know? Because it turns, it, once it turns into a sign, I don't know what our rules are for signs using cargo containers, I can't imagine that that's something that we do, but um. So we just have to watch that kind of stuff, but I think it's good to have options for people if they, if they want to do something different. Something to talk about. And of course, we don't want graffiti, obviously. There was concern about having containers along S R eighty-nine, not having them visible from S R eighty-nine. I mean, that, that is our front door and that's the most visible place that we have and. If that's what we want to show people who we are, then that's probably not how we want to be seen. Usually you put that stuff behind and so the idea is that you don't put the junk out front, you put the junk in the back. It's, it's the living room is in the front, not the, not the family room is in the front along eighty-nine, if, if you can relate houses to uh properties. So um in speaking with one of the planning commission members who came in, he, he felt that. Um, for residential zones, that metal storage containers on corner lots needed to be screened. Hadn't occurred to me, well, that's why I talked to you guys and then I go talk to the planning commission and then I come back to you guys with things that they think make sense. And then you guys add things or takes things away. So um, this is just something that I have heard a whole lot about and so I wanted to bring it forward in a different capacity. Um, and get some feedback from you about whether this is a pathway we want to go on or we want to stay where we're at with not, not allowing them.
Okay, since I was on that committee.
Yes.
A couple of things.
Okay.
I'll add to this, uh, one was the use permit made perfectly good sense instead of a building permit, since it's not a building. The one thing we did talk about though, because chances are that if somebody comes in and puts a forty foot container on their property, it will be semi-permanent.
Yes.
Okay, so the idea was go ahead and make it serve the setback of say twenty feet, like a building would be, rather than ten feet for a temporary structure.
I agree.
Okay, so that was one thing, just to protect the neighbor a little bit. And the whole thing with the paint was trying to come up with, okay, it had to be painted the same color as the house or something like that, was to keep someone from. From deliberately to getting at their neighbor for moving in their forty foot. getting at their neighbor for moving in their forty foot container and painting it the color of your blouse. So, that, that's where the paint thing came from.
Oh, and I totally get the need for some controls on the paint.
But I, I agree, I mean, I, I'm gonna use a stor, a metal storage tank in a person's yard in Prescott that I thought was just awesome. You go down in the area and when you get down on the level of their home, you look and see they have not only a skyline where the skyline is on their property, but trees and a deer and that painted on it where it just
disappeared.
Blended right into the property. So.
One of the things I had thought of was, well, instead of making them disappear, maybe we have a public art competition for the sides of cargo containers. Obviously, that's not on here.
Can we discuss one acre? Because I believe when we talked about this before, we took it down to half acre, quarter acre. It was not a minimum of one acre.
It was based on the square footage of your property. We had a formula, I don't even remember what it was now, but.
It seemed a little complicated.
Well, if you had a half acre lot, then you couldn't. So with this, it says for a one acre lot, you can have one, but so a half acre lot, you cannot have one.
Well, what I've been experiencing at the planning commission is that we get subdivisions that have easements. And so you have a fifty foot wide swath along the, the, the width of the property, which effectively removes that much acreage from your property. So you don't have half an acre, you have less than, you have a couple thousand square feet less than that. So, you don't really have half an acre, you know, with the easements. And with the planning commission, we're kind of struggling with that in terms of twenty, you know, the half acre lot thing, that the discussion that we're having is it, that's easy when it's on a dedicated road, when you have an easement, then what size lot are you really have? I mean, I know legally you have the full half acre, but when you take off the first fifty feet for a road, then you don't have a half an acre anymore. So, so you're starting, you're getting smaller. Up to you guys, how you want to do that.
I agree, and that's why we went that way, cause you could put on like a, a, an eight by ten. That's only eight, eight square feet. So if you can get what you want, those little shorties.
And that makes sense.
And that's why we come up with that. I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the numbers again, but it was so much a multiplier per your acres of your lot.
Yeah, and the math was done off of a forty foot container on an acre and then proportionally.
I think, I, I feel that that's in the best interest of our residents for their freedom to use, of use of their property.
How small of a size acreage would you guys?
Need to go back and.
Yeah, we'd have to dig up that paper.
We had a long study session about this.
Very long.
Will was here. Do you want to go back and do that, or do you want to set a size half acre and bigger you can have them?
I, I like what we came up with.
Ten foot, a quarter acre, twenty and a half acre. Well, we'll just bring up the old notes.
Well, cargos don't get smaller than twenty foot, do they?
Yeah, you can get them at ten.
Oh, did you make them a ton?
Yeah, they do make them smaller. Okay, I know that Will has that stuff, so we'll brush it off.
That's what we did before. It just seemed fair that way.
Fair to everyone, not just people. But everything else aligned, you know, with setbacks, with painting, et cetera, everything else is just the numbers of the square footage of what was available. We spent a lot of time working through those numbers to get it figured out so that it was fair to everyone else. I'm in agreement with everything else.
Tom?
I don't have a problem with any of it. I think Lori's going the right direction and we can provide some, some more input after we go back and look at the previous notes.
Okay, thank you. You guys over there?
I, I just think keep it simple with earth tones and, or same color of the house. You start drawing crazy stuff on there, you're gonna get the neighbors calling development services and drive you guys crazy. So I'll just keep it real simple.
Well, you see, I didn't put the proposal for the art.
People will be drawing crazy stuff on there.
Okay, anything else on that? Nothing? And you're done?
Perfect. You've given me guidance and I'll, I'll meet with the planning commission and you guys will see these things again.
Okay, then we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn this study session and we'll be back at six.
Time for pizza.
Thank you. What? You look like you had somebody that had some.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have roll call?
You can barely hear you, but I'm here.
Vice Mayor Perkins. Town Attorney is present remotely.
Alrighty. Introduction, presentation, proclamations. Presentation by Aaron Maberry. Executive Director, yep, by Big Brothers Big Sisters and proclamation declare in December 31st, 2021, as yep, by Big Brothers Big Sisters 50th Anniversary.
Thank you for having us tonight. As you know, it's our 50th anniversary this year. Fifty years of serving Yavapai County, matching bigs and littles together with meaningful, intentional relationships. If you're not familiar with what we do, Big Brothers Big Sisters keeps kids off TikTok.
Oh, thank you. I was wondering if I needed to yell. We go out, we recruit volunteers out of the community looking for, looking for a relationship with a child. And we intentionally and professionally support that relationship all the way through the time that they're together. Usually it's about a year. Our, actually, our average is over four years of a relationship. So they are very successful. What we do is actually get together with a, with a potential big, a volunteer in the community. And we vet them and make sure that they're safe and that they're going to be doing what they say as per our parameters and, and rules in our program. And then we match them with a child that they have kind of likenesses with, you know, so make sure that they want to go fishing together or do things together. And that relationship really blossoms throughout the time that they're together. We have different programs that they can sign up to be part of. They can go out in the community if they want to be a community big. Or we have school-based programs where the big might go to the school and spend maybe an hour or two a week with the child. As we know today, our kids being as disconnected they are and, and on TikTok and that kind of thing, really need to have a caring adult in their life. So right now, it's been a challenge for Big Brothers Big Sisters to be finding volunteers. As you all know, volunteerism is at its all-time lowest across the nation. So if there's anybody you know or, or you're interested, azbigs.org is how you get in touch with us or you can call us or come by our offices. And we can hook you up with one of our waiting littles. We have 146 waiting littles throughout Yavapai County. These kids sometimes sit on the waitlist for a really long time, depending on their personality or their needs, until we find that right big to be with them. Make sure that it's a, a good relationship. And then when they do get matched, which I, I tend to call it the magic moment. But when they do get matched, usually they, they get together once a week, twice a week. They text each other, they call each other, they, you know, support each other. And I got to tell you, a lot of the stories that come back to us are really about the impact on the bigs, believe it or not. The littles, you know, they're in a program and, and they kind of go along and, and a lot of times they do come back and they say, oh, when I was, you know, with your program, it really changed my life. But when we hear the stories of the bigs and the impact it has on them and their families, it's pretty powerful. So it's our 50th year. We have served over 11,500 children throughout Yavapai County over 50 years. So we just wanted to thank you. I, I believe you have a proclamation for us and we'll talk a little bit about the stats, I think, as in the proclamation. About the outcomes of our kids and their, their likeliness to finish or go to college, finish high school. Not ditch school and do crazy things on TikTok again. I'll pick on them. And their, their percentages of their likeliness of not doing drugs, giving back to their community, that kind of thing. So I'll, I'll make sure that we highlight that when we're talking about this proclamation. But 50 years and if there's somebody out there that wants to help support us, of course, it's our tax credit season and I have brochures about that.
Okay. So I am reading this for Jack, our mayor. So many of you may or may not know, I was a foster child and I had a big. Uh huh. This is why I wanted to read it. And my big, her name was Barb and I was, I was separated from my older siblings. So it worked out really well. This wasn't in Yavapai County. This was back in Ohio. And my favorite memory, it sounds so silly. She took me to Taco Bell. And we had a competition on who could eat the most tacos, crunchy tacos. And I had nine. I ate nine. And that was like, you know, when you're little, you don't think of those moments. But at my age now, I'm like, I ate nine tacos, you know, like. I had a big and it was so amazing for me. So thank you, Jack, for letting me read this. He just doesn't like to read. Thank you for all you do. As a former little. Alright. Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters 50th Anniversary Proclamation. Whereas in August 1971, Yavapai Big Brothers and Big Sisters was established to provide one-on-one mentoring to the children of Yavapai County. And whereas, as of 2020, August 2021, Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters is celebrating 50 years of serving local children through one-on-one mentoring relationships with caring adult volunteers. And whereas, Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters is the number one mentoring organization in Yavapai County. And whereas, over 11,000 little brothers and sisters have been matched with big brothers and sisters across Yavapai County. And whereas, through partnerships with parents and guardians, volunteers and others in the community, each child had, was helped to achieve higher aspirations, educational success, greater confidence, and learn how to build better relationships. And whereas, 40, when children have the influence of a caring adult, they are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs. fifty-two percent less likely to skip school, fifty-five percent more likely to enroll in college. And whereas, creating and professionally supporting one-on-one mentoring relationships that ignite the promise in all of us, allowing everyone to achieve their full potential. And whereas, Yavapai Big Brother Big Sisters mentoring is professional, mentoring is intentional, mentoring is meaningful, and therefore, be it resolved that I, Annie Perkins, reading on behalf of our mayor, Jack Miller, town of Chino Valley, do hereby proclaim December thirty first, twenty twenty-one, to be Yavapai Big Brother Big Sisters fiftieth anniversary, and express appreciation on behalf of the town of Chino Valley to the eleven thousand volunteers that have provided one-on-one mentoring of the youth of Yavapai County in its fifty years of existence. Thank you.
Obviously, we'll take the credit for all the potential that was inspired. Thank you so much for those words. As you can see, living proof that this, this program is very inspirational. It, it, it reaches in a deeper way, not only for our littles, but for our bigs too. And I hope that you're still in touch with your big. No? Oh, okay. Well, darn. Maybe we can find her. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Presentation of Arizona Pro Racing hosting two weekend events at Old Home Manor. Maggie, it says.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening. So a couple of years ago, Arizona Off-Road Promotions approached a town wanting to do a weekend race. And, you know, then COVID hit and everything, and everything kind of got put on hold. And since then, we've started talking again. And we are here to show you a slide deck of what they are wanting to do out of Old Home Manor. First, I'd like to introduce you to Kyle Kraus. He is the owner of Arizona Off-Road Promotions. Between him and his business partner, they've been doing this for fifty years combined, all over the state of Arizona. And Kyle, say hi, please. You're on mute, Kyle.
Hello.
Okay, that's good enough. Okay. So they are definitely a fam- family-friendly and a fun racing event that they want to do basically two times a year at Old Home Manor, one weekend in May and another one in April. Next slide, please. They're always looking for new venues. They work with several different, they work at the Bureau of Land Management, the US Forest Service, different municipalities, all over the state again, to off-road challenges, series in the southwest. You should have control if you just hit the enter button. There you go. So like I just previously stated, together, him and his business partner have about fifty years of combined racing experience. And they take a lot of time to design the best tracks around Arizona. And here's a fun photo. You can see that there's a lot of families and kids. And this one actually is, I believe, in Lake Mary or Blythe, one of the two. Here are some of the places that they have been to, Page, Blythe, Mormon Lake, like Havasu, Flagstaff, Wickenburg, Peoria, Globe, Payson, Prescott Valley, Ultra Mine, Lake Powell, Hila Ben. The photo on the bottom left is actually when they did the event at Prescott Valley. They've actually since outgrown that venue, so, and the other one on the right is over in Blythe. So what they're proposing is to use about eighty acres. They've already got a name for the Chino Bandino, which would be the UTV event. And what that is, is the side-by-sides, and they do a route, and it's a fifty-mile route, so it's a little bit more mellow. When they do the Grand Prix, they set up the track, they tear it down, they have a water truck for dust mitigation, and they're also fully insured, and the town is listed as additionally insured. And we're going to show you a couple of videos just to give you a sneak peek, so that you can see exactly what it is. I'm only going to play it for like a minute each though, because they're kind of long. So this is the UTV event, and this was in Globe. What's nice is they actually showcase your, your town as well. So when they're, when they're doing their video, they, it's not just of them racing or the UTVs, they, they showcase the town. You see some of their sponsors and their sign-in. And this is the night ride. Okay, let's get on that one, then I'll show you what the Grand Prix would look like. This is an event for all ages as well.
That's what you need.
Commercial, yeah.
Yeah.
So again, they do, they do set up, they will come back on the Monday following on this particular event and put it back just like they found it. This is at Mormon Lake, which is up by Flagstaff.
Oops, somebody's gone.
Yeah.
Uh oh.
Got to have a little craziness.
Next slide. So this is a map of Old Home Manor. Here is the business park. Here is the Equestrian Center, the college. And just to give you some feeling, here's the new Icar Airsoft Arena. What we're proposing is along Perkinsville Road, the baseball fields to be where they would camp. They do have RVs. And then the adjacent field here, the other forty acres to be the racetrack. So the economic impact is very positive. So the Arizona Office of Tourism estimates that an average overnight visitor has two point four persons per car with a per-party-per-day expenditure of two hundred and fifty dollars a car. And that's just an average in northern Arizona. So obviously, a very positive economic impact on our community. And I'm going to open it up for questions, and Kyle, I'm going to actually let you answer probably most of these where you can, and the ones that I need to, I will answer.
Okay.
All right, questions on Tom? John?
I do not.
Annie?
I look forward to it.
What about down here?
Is it a weekend, just for the weekend?
Just for a weekend. So one is, um, the slide deck, I apologize, I'll go back to that and show you the exact dates.
These dates wouldn't conflict with anything going on at the Equestrian Center with the horses, would it?
Not that I'm aware of, but we are definitely going to make them aware once you guys say this is okay to do, or if we can move forward on it. So the Chino Bandino is a longer event, it's May twenty-seventh through the thirtieth, because it's a little bit more, like I said, mellow. They're going to be doing camping, hanging out, doing the, the whole route thing. Whereas the Grand Prix is just the sixteenth and seventeenth, and they clean up on a Monday.
Hey, Kyle, do you guys do a night ride after the event?
For the UTV event, yeah, we, we just do one night ride, about a fifteen-mile loop night ride, and then two rides on Saturday and two rides on Sunday. So we would base out of Old Manor, and then we'd just go out, one would go to Jerome probably, and the other one's kind of towards Williams and come back. And then do our nighttime festivities, like we do a cornhole tournament, and we feed the people. So we try to get the, um, like a local food vendor on board and stuff like that.
And the RVs would be placed?
Night ride Friday night from like seven PM, it starts, it's usually about an hour and a half, two hours long.
And the Old Home Manor would host the RVs at the park?
Correct.
And, and so all, all the RVs that come in will be on that one twenty-acre parcel? That's what we expect?
Correct. And, and Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's also a lot of dry camping, not everybody brings an RV? And they also stay in some local hotels as well?
Yeah, they stay in hotels. Some people just drive up, you know, for, for the day and come back. We have racers from Flagstaff, Page, Tucson, all over the state of Arizona, even California and some other states close by. So they would just, they would camp there. It's all, pretty much all dry camping. If there's an RV park there, we can tell people to go there if they want to, uh, full hookups. If not, they'll just dry camp there in the area that we set up.
And, and all of the racing is done right there at Old Home Manor?
Yes, so the Grand Prix would be at Old Home Manor on that parcel that's adjacent to the ball fields, that would be to the west. And then, but not the UTV, the UTV ride-along is a fifty-mile loop. I'm anticipating they're probably going to do the Jerome Loop, you know how you can go up, and then you can go the nice way and then the rough way back.
But that's just a ride?
That's just a ride, correct.
Yeah, that's just a ride, okay.
Tom? Tom, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have any questions.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay, I think that wraps it up then.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kyle. Talk to you later.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Presentation by Vinnie Gallegos. Hope I said that right, Vinnie.
Gallegos.
Gallegos, no, sorry, A's I, right.
Okay, Gallegos.
From Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, Cympo, regarding their five-year program and overview.
Hi, Frank. I'll, I'll be quick, uh, just, if you've seen the new signal on One North, that was a Cympo project, and Vinnie's here to tell you all about Cympo, so I won't get in the way.
Thanks, Frank, appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me some time today. My name is Vinnie Gallegos. I am the executive director of the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, good government organization, long title, right, uh, using acronym, so Cympo for short, or C Y M P O. Um, I have my contact information. Please, by all means, look at our website for additional information. I'll be happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation. Feel free, anytime, stop by, uh, call, email, I'm happy to, to visit with, with any of you, look forward to it. Let me just give a, a little bit of background, in case you're not familiar with what a metropolitan planning organization is, or an MPO. It's not necessarily unique to our area. They exist throughout the United States. It was in the late sixties, early seventies, federal government was seeing a lot of the, the money go to, to building roads, and the question became, you know, who's planning for the future? What does the regions look like throughout the United States? So it was established that any urbanized area with a population of fifty thousand people or more by the US Census would be designated an urbanized area, and in turn, would also have an MPO. So again, there's a little over four hundred MPOs throughout the United States. We have eight of them in Arizona. You could probably guess several of those urbanized areas. I listed them here. We are, uh, have been, uh, in the central Yavapai since two thousand, the two thousand census, the governor established Cympo in two thousand and three. As part of our transportation planning, it's multimodal. So, you know, probably get a lot of publicity, if you will, for, for roads and highways, but definitely involved with, uh, public transit, bicycle, pedestrian activities also, as part of our planning. The vision of Cympo is to promote and maintain a regional coordinated transportation system for the safe and efficient movement of people, goods, and services. For today's presentation, I, I, I highlighted and underlined safe and efficient. I think that's really important to all of us, that, that get on the roads, or bicycle, or, or walk around. We want to get there efficiently, and we want to get there safely. The mission is to use regional leadership in planning and promoting a comprehensive multimodal transportation system. As I mentioned, Cympo was established in two thousand and three. The urbanized area is Prescott and Prescott Valley, but our planning area is the Quad City area. So that includes the town of Chino Valley, Dewey-Humboldt, and then the adjacent Yavapai, unincorporated Yavapai County areas. The Cympo area is around four hundred square miles, around a hundred and fifty thousand of, of population. I serve at the direction of an executive board. We, your representative on our board is Councilman Armstrong. Also tonight in the room is Supervisor Chairman Craig Brown from Yavapai County. They both serve on the executive board. In addition to them, we have a technical committee that we work with. Your representative is Frank Marbury. And the other communities have similar staff serving on that technical committee that work with our staff on various projects to, uh, be able to, to vet them and then be able to recommend them onto the executive board. We have a, a group that was formed a few years ago. It's called EMAC for short, but it's a group that looks at wildlife mitigation as it relates to transportation. You know, there's a, a concern as it, as development continues with the antelope and other wildlife in the area, and how those two, uh, work together at times, so that is another group. Funding, so we are funded through the federal infrastructure bill, which comes down through Federal Highway Administration, Federal Transit Administration, works its way down to the Arizona Department of Transportation, and eventually to us. A primary expense of Cympo is planning, so we're a planning organization. Some of the monies we receive, in addition to doing planning, we are able to use for infrastructure, construction, as Frank introduced, and I'll highlight this project in a moment, traffic signals, roundabouts, and other types of infrastructure, so those are a couple examples. Some of our planning studies, and again, go to our website for more information at cympo.org, but our work program highlights everything, every penny that we receive is accounted for in our work program, so you could see all the work that we are doing, both administratively and in projects. Our transportation improvement program looks at our major projects for the next five years, and I'll highlight that in just a moment. And then one plan in particular I wanted to bring to your attention is our twenty-five-year regional transportation plan. That transportation plan, we're required by the federal government to update it every five years. It's, it's a, it's a, it is a comprehensive document in that it looks at the Quad City area, the central Yavapai area. What is our population today? What does the future look like with development, growth, traffic? And how does all of that operate? Clearly, it identifies a, a pretty decent list of needs. But furthermore, in that document, it goes on to also identify solutions to that. So I, I would really bring that to your attention. Some of the projects, and Frank led off with this, so some of the projects over the year that Cympo has been involved one way or another, either through the planning process or been able to commit dollars to design and/or construction to partner with either the town of Chino Valley or ADOT. Are these projects that I've listed here over the year, so the Perkinsville Road Roundabout, the widening on eighty-nine, the widening, uh, the traffic interchange at eighty-nine and eighty-nine A. These projects are, are a little bit more Chino Valley specific. But again, understand that the projects, there's a, a longer list of regional projects that, as you look at how the Quad Cities operating together, I would say everyone is impacted by, but I wanted to list these projects in particular. I mentioned our transportation improvement program as you look to the next five years. This past summer, we had a strategic planning retreat with my, with the staff, with the executive board and the technical committee. There will be several projects, but these are some of our, our major projects, if you will. So this year, we're focused on the SunDog Connector Design Concept Report. Next year, we'll be looking at sixty-nine as a master corridor. Followed by that will be State Route eighty-nine A widening. Followed by that is the Great Western Extension, which would be another route to connect the town of Prescott Valley with Chino Valley. And then in year five would be looking at the eighty-nine master corridor plan that's listed there. Another part of what we do, I mentioned, is public transit. The urbanized area does receive federal dollars for public transportation. Outside of the urbanized area, the rural area, such as Chino Valley, is able to go after federal funds in a competitive basis. Yavapai Regional Transit, who we work with, has been successful in, in obtaining those funds over the year. Uh, Yavapai Regional Transit, who we work with, um, has been successful in, in obtaining those funds over the year. Um, moving forward, from a, a planning organization, we have developed plans as to how we can expand the services with Yavapai Regional Transit. Uh, Prescott Valley in this next year is looking at starting a transit service. And from a planning standpoint, you know, we want to continue to see what opportunities where that could expand and all work together. So I just wanted to highlight that today. Uh, here's my last slide and then I'm happy to take questions and comments. Uh, over the next year, next couple of months, you'll hear some more information about this. Um, we have a advocacy arm of Cympo. It's called the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council. Um, they're our, um, legislative, um, lobbying arm, if you will. And on our behalf, they're going to be seeking, uh, fifty million dollars of one-time funding of the state legislature. Uh, this is for greater Arizona or rural Arizona. And this is outside Phoenix and Tucson. If, if we're successful in that, that fifty million dollars, uh, would result in about four million dollars for the Central Yavapai area. Uh, through, again, the, the technical committee, the executive board, uh, we have identified for, or I'm sorry, three projects. One being the Sun Dog Connector, two being the eighty-nine A eastbound on-ramp, um, at that intersection of eighty-nine and eighty-nine A. And then to provide some additional dollars for sixty-nine, one sixty-nine roundabout. So with that said, that concludes my presentation to you. I'll put my contact info back on the screen. Uh, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions that you or council has.
Thank you very much. How about down here? That was very informative this side.
Just, just one, the only thing I didn't hear much about was bike routes. Um, is there going to be an expanded, uh, exploratory into greater bicycling lanes in our existing roads?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and, and council member, sir, thank you for asking that question. Um, at this time, uh, my, my hope is in the next year to be able to have a project very specific to that. We have it penciled in. There, there's no dollars that we found for it yet, so we're in search of that. But it's going to be an active transportation plan. If we're able to do that, and I think there's going to be some grant opportunities to do this, in an active transportation plan, what we would do is look at the Quad City area specifically for bicycle and pedestrian opportunities, if you will, identify that and be able to see what we could pursue. Um, I had the opportunity recently to serve as the Director in Lake Havasu at their MPO just recently for the last several years. And we did a, a pedestrian bicycle study and that was incredibly successful and, and really identifying solutions and opportunities for funding. So that, that's an answer in that it's on our list. And if we can find the funding to do that and I can get support from our technical committee and board, then in the next year at least we'll have a, a plan moving forward for it.
Annie?
Nothing further. I'm just really happy about the light at One North.
Tom, do you have anything, bud?
Vinnie, nice to see you again, sir, nice presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. Good to see you too, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vinnie.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. All the best to you.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have Call the Public.
Call of the Public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for Call of the Public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. First, um, speaker I have is Eileen Rafters.
Welcome.
Hi, thanks. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and town manager. My name is Eileen Rafters. I am a current resident of Chino Valley as well as an operations supervisor and a representative of Lifeline Ambulance. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address and bring to the council's attention what I feel has been intentionally misleading and harmful information that's being provided to our community. For several weeks now, we've had a community leader, Chief Freitag, mention incidents where he feels Lifeline Ambulance has allegedly not responded adequately to this community. Chief Freitag has cited very specific examples, but excluded relevant facts and/or context that is pertinent to each of those incidents. In doing so, Lifeline's long history and represent, reputation as an outstanding community partner has been under attack. While there's not sufficient time this evening to address each occurrence that has been raised publicly, as a concerned resident and someone who's intimately aware of each, intimately aware and familiar with the pertinent facts, I would appreciate the opportunity to meet with and present some additional information to this collective body. Lifeline would be happy to meet with all of the representatives of the town council as appropriate to discuss these manners, matters in a manner which is convenient to you. It is not my intention to disparage any individuals or organizations. However, it is my intention to tell a more complete and accurate account of these matters and allow my community leaders to base their decisions and guidance upon hearing all of the facts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you, Cindy, you have a card you can give her so? So she can get a hold of, or one of, and then they'll get something set up. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next I have Supervisor Craig Brown.
Oh. I was going to just say, he was standing there wanting to go first. He was hurt because he didn't get to go first.
I'm sorry.
No, but when I saw her get up, I knew it was going to be, uh, might be here a while. So anyway, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council for having me here tonight. I just wanted to make a couple of, uh, uh, say a couple of words of congratulations to the town. The light at One North is a big, major accomplishment. I was talking to Frank earlier and we realized that it was actually six years ago that we actually started that project. And when we started looking at it, a lot of time has gone by, but finally it's done, yes. Just under a couple million dollars, so price tag went up, but so, so be it, you know, of course the time. Uh, the other congratulation is, is, is on those other projects, it sounds like a lot was directed towards Chino. I can't say, I want to take credit for it, but Chino worked very hard with me to get those projects done during the course of when I was Chairman of the Board. It was simple. I'm now the Vice Chair and will be Chair next year. So we're back to it. And some of those projects, Mr. Gallegos has put on, that he said are going, moving forward, they may or may not. It depends on the board. So some of them I want to see some redirection myself personally away from the, uh, two major cities, Prescott and Prescott Valley, and some of that money possibly move forward to some planning for eighty-nine north out of Chino Valley, which is the last of the eighty-nine project up to the forest boundary. So it's kind of a, we go in and we try and see what's possible. And we know that that project would be a, you know, extremely expensive and, uh, but we're trying to get some one-time funding out of the legislature to maybe move forward with it being the last year of this administration probably. So the other thing I came in to tell you about was, is that we have a twenty-acre park located up in the, um, uh, the Oaks area up here above nor, Five North. And that, that park is not getting used hardly at all. So I wanted to say, put out to the town that if you have some baseball teams that would like to come up there and have practice fields, there's three fields. And they could use them without, you know, charge or anything like that. They would just have to call facilities and set it up. And then they come up and use them. So I thought maybe Eric would be interested in that information. It might be something they could use in the springtime.
Yeah, thank you. And that's in Quail Ridge, right?
Quail Ridge, correct. So, and it's right off Quail Ridge Road south of, uh, Five North. And we're putting some money into it, so the parking lot's paved, bathroom's all been cleaned up and it's all ready to go. So, and it got grandstands and everything else if people want to come in and practice. So anyway, it's open to the folks here in Chino Valley if they want to use it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next I have, uh, Mr. Larry Holt.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Town Manager. I just wanted to, I know that you've probably all seen this and you all know that I'm a little active on, on social media. But I want to bring to your attention the last year's publications have been put out by the Coalition for Compassionate Justice, claiming that they have an approved twenty-five mobile homes going on a four-acre lot up behind Chino Valley Animal Hospital. They're continuing to advertise this as a done deal and a lot of residents in town are really, really upset about this. And I would encourage the council number one to look at this project very closely when it comes to you. Look at their projects that they've done in other towns, the crime-related and the service calls related. And I understand we have a homeless issue here. But this isn't, as I understand, it won't be servicing our homeless issue. It's also, and I have confirmed this with CCJ, it is not for veterans. Their feeling is veterans have other ways to get affordable housing. This is for, from what I can understand, the people on the streets in Prescott, which is going to close their problem out and push it on Chino Valley. And we don't have the resources to deal with it. And there are no mental health resources here. There are no treatment resources here. This, this is better suited in another community other than ours. And I really hope that you guys will look at this closely when it comes, because it's coming, because they just had a big birthday party out there last week saying that it's, all they need now is town, or their permits and they're going to start building it. So it's out there, it's being advertised. Um, one other thing is I watched a work group today and I want to say there's some things that are really impressing me, upon me. The, our new Director of, uh, of Developmental Services. One is I drove around town a couple of months ago, right after, um, Lori started. And I saw these nice big signs where developments are coming in versus a little piece of yellow paper stuck up against yellow grass that you couldn't ever tell what it was. So I want to thank her for that. Um, I know we're looking at the point one-six acreage thing and splits and all that. I thank you for that. The only thing I would caution you about is allowing in-law quarters or guest houses to become rentals. I can see everybody and their mother bringing in a modular home, a trailer or an RV and renting out on their property and we're going to become the biggest RV lot in the, in the country if that happens. Because if you look on social media, every week somebody's advertising, I need a place to come and live. Can I, does anybody have a piece of property I can rent? So just ask you to keep your eye on that and keep your finger on the pulse. And I'll be back November fourteenth with some really exciting news for the town.
Cool, thank you. Thank you.
That's all the comment cards that I had submitted to me.
Okay, was anybody else who would like to speak that did not fill out a card? Alright, we're going to move on. Current event summaries and reports, decided for information only. The mayor, any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on, or, sorry, on information requested by the mayor and council and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. So status reports by mayor and council. I have one quick thing, um, and this is for all the council. I know when our phone rings after you get on council, a lot of times this doesn't put a smile on your face. Um, however, I was in at a local business and I won't say her name because I didn't get a permission to mention this, but she told me that she was, how does she say it? Shirt bustin', shirt bust, button bustin' proud of the job that we're doing up here now, so.
Was it Natalie Latham?
No.
Okay.
But I just wanted to, just wanted to pass that on to you guys that there are people out there that, that like what we're doing. Okay, anybody else? Annie, go ahead.
Yes, I do. Good evening again, everyone. Um, so I'll point you to the Chino Valley Review and the Daily Courier. Um, our Chino Valley Boys and Girls High School Soccer Team won their, um, state championship game this past Saturday. It's been five years since they won state. And this was the second state championship title for the girls ever. And the second time the boys and the girls have both won. And I was, um, honored to be a mom back in two thousand and sixteen when they did it and again this year. So huge shout out to, um, our Cougar Soccer. And also our, um, local student athlete mountain bow, uh, mountain bike team, maybe you can expand on that, um, also won their state title this weekend. So great things happening for Chino Valley youth and I'm just over the moon. And that's all I have.
Thank you. John?
Just a shout out. I took a tour library last week here and I was amazed, uh, Friends of the Library. I was completely amazed at the detail, the dedication these folks have and all the work that they do. I was just truly impressed with the Friends of the Library. I had no idea of how much they do and how efficient and effective they were. So just a shout out to them.
Cool, thank you. Tom?
Let's see here, sir, thank.
Kate?
I just want to second what Annie said. I wanted to congratulate the high school boys and girls soccer and the bike team for winning state. That's awesome. Thank you.
Me too, as a Chino Valley alumni. Well, Chino. Lon, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, um, oh, one more thing is ICor had their ribber, ribbon, I can't talk today. A ribbon cutting ceremony day and it's a really nice facility out there. So if you're mad at your spouse and you'd like to go get even, it costs you thirty bucks to waste them, so.
It was so much fun. It was so much fun. And, um, shall we never forget, it is Veterans Day this coming Thursday and the town offices will be closed. Thank you to all of our veterans. I am complete.
Yo, one more, go ahead, please.
Also on the ICor, it's not the ICor as in Vietnam.
Ma'am?
Alright, Mayor, Council, um, just a couple of quick things, but first is an introduction. I would like to officially introduce Terry Denemy. Um, stand up, Terry. She is now part of our One Town, One Team. Um, she started last Monday. We're really excited to have her. She comes to us with many years of experience and a lot of expertise that is going to bring a lot of value to our town. She's already jumped in and been making a difference, so I'm just wanted to welcome her to the team.
Welcome.
Alright, and then the second one is I am very proud, um, to recognize, um, the accomplishments that our economic, economic development manager Maggie Titeback has, um, accomplished here. First off, um, Chino Valley was awarded, uh, Golden Prospector Award. Um, it was for our Discover Chino Valley website. Um, and this is, um, from the Arizona Association for Economic Development. So that was, that was really, um, she put a lot of hard work into that and to have that recognition is a big deal. So I want to thank her for that. And on top of that, Maggie, are you out there? Yeah? Maggie was awarded the Economic Developer of the Year in a small community. It, it is a distinguished excellent award from the Arizona Association for Economic Development. And I just have to say that, you know, um, Maggie hasn't been working in local government for that long and for her to make such an impact and, and be recognized by an, uh, an Arizona Association is really fantastic. And it really just shows how hard she's working, um, to get our town on the map and, um, do the best we can to encourage the economy to better our town. So thank you, Maggie, for that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, moving on, Consent Agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Would anybody on this side like to remove anything?
No.
No. This side over here? Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then we'll enhance, entertain the motion.
Okay, I will make an, I will make a motion. We approve Consent Agenda Items Five, A, B, C, D as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Action items. The council may vote to recess a public meeting and hold executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, point eight, oh-three, A-three for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public and no action may be taken in executive session. You're not allowed to be up here yet.
I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding. Item A, consideration and possible action to approve the Perkinsville forty-four final plat phases one, two, three, and four to divide approximately forty-four point three acres into one hundred and sixty-two lots with an average lot size of approximately seven thousand square feet. Applicant Greg Helsing, Brown Homes, AP. Applicant Greg Helsing, Brown Holmes, APN three oh six, eighteen, zero nine, uh, zero zero nine H. Will, now you can come up.
Alrighty, thank you, mayor, vice mayor and members of the council. Um, I wanted to give everybody a brief recap of this project before we begin our discussion. The forty-four acre parcel is located on the northeast corner of North, North Road One East and East Perkinsville Road. The development contains one hundred and sixty-two lots, proposed to be developed over four phases and will be connected to town water and town sewer. This item was brought before council on October twenty-sixth, um, at meeting, which concluded with council directing staff to research. The pedestrian safety concerns of Perkinsville Road. Staff has completed their research in this matter and are bringing forward two options. Intended to address these concerns that Public Works Director Frank Marbury will discuss with you. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Frank.
Thank you, Will. Good evening, mayor and members of council. Apologize I was not here at the last meeting due to illness, but I think I caught up on everything. So what I've done is we've researched it, uh, had several discussions with the developers, traffic engineer in particular. And brought this before the Roads and Streets Committee for discussion. So what we have here is uh. One of our visual exhibits, uh, I may have the name wrong. I believe Arden may have changed names by now, but it's the. It's the main entrance to the, to the subdivision along Perkinsville Road. There's another entrance off of One East. That Will had on his other exhibit. So what we're looking at, from my understanding of council's previous discussions, was concerns of crossings in potentially two locations. One at Road One East and one in the vicinity of the entrance into the subdivision. Upon discussions with the traffic engineer and roads and streets. Uh, I came up with, with two possible solutions here and I'll discuss them a little bit, but. One East is pretty easy to get a crosswalk there. Uh, the discussion is whether or not to put a four-way stop. And how to treat that crosswalk. I will note in the town's five-year capital improvement plan. I believe it's in FY twenty-six, we're looking at widening One East and continuing the multi-use pathway down to Two North. In front of the recreation facilities and the school. So that will connect the multi-use pathway on the north side of Perkinsville. Down towards Two North to the school area. So you will have some good sidewalks there. The other concern is since the driveway of, we'll just call it Arden for now, is about a thousand feet away from. One East. And how pedestrians will come out of that wanting to get to the recreation facilities across the street and how to treat that. Currently, there's no stop control planned for that intersection, other than a stop sign coming out of the subdivision. Looking at the committee, uh, the Roads Committee actually recommended. Looking a little bit east of that intersection for what I would call a mid-block crossing. On the north side, just basically a ADA accessible ramp lining up with the. Drive entrance near the dog park, rather than necessarily Arden. And that gets you lined up with the facilities that are there. There's a maintenance road behind there, but the main attraction in that area is the dog park. So the committee's recommendation after fairly lengthy discussion. Um, was several things. Um, and I broke this up into two possible stipulations. The first one. Is it, I'll start with actually the second one, because that's the Roads and Streets Committee's recommendation. Is to install crosswalks along, at One East, but not a four-way stop. They recommended uh, using what I would call flashing beacons on the crosswalk signs. Uh, where the pedestrian pushes a button and the lights flash for a certain amount of time while they're crossing. They also recommended that same treatment at the crosswalk near the dog park. So you would have, you wouldn't have any stop signs on Perkinsville, which is the condition that it is now. But they recommended lowering the speed limit to twenty-five in that area and using those crosswalks with the pedestrian activated beacons. Did, I discussed that today with the Developers Traffic Engineer. And there was some concern about having two crosswalks with flashing beacons. Uh, the theory being the more flashing lights you put in proximity to each other, the less they're paid attention to. So his recommendation is to install a four-way stop. At One East, if you're looking to do a crosswalk there, rather than the flashing beacons. Go ahead and stop traffic all four ways there. And then use the flashing lights at the mid-block crossing near the dog park and still lower the speed limit. So that's the difference between the two stipulations. One has a four-way stop, one does not. And the Roads and Streets Committee discussed the four-way stop option. Their recommendation was just to look at the flashing beacons for now and evaluate it through time and adjust as needed. Uh, in the future. So I think those are. Be open to any questions or concerns from council. I think that was the crux of the safety concerns from the council. And these are two possible solutions for council to choose from or combination thereof.
Okay, I'm on, I'm gonna, thank you Frank. Are you through, sir? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to answer any question, so I'll just.
I think I'm going to open this up for a public input and see if there's anybody wants to say anything and then we'll discuss them on ourselves.
I think I like the four, four-way stop signs.
Has anything they want to say first and then we'll talk, please. Alright, now we're gonna open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or do you have any cards?
I do not have any submitted cards.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience want to make a comment about this? Okay, hearing done. We'll close the public, the public hearing. And then now we'll do talk among us. Now go ahead.
I think the four, the four-way stop signs at the corner at One East and Perkinsville is a very smart move. Because in the summer, all the traffic, when you start counting as we are increasing our traffic count, I think that's a strong idea.
You want just the four-way stop and then no crosswalk down in Arden or both?
What, yeah, both.
Okay. How about you, Mr. Grineal?
No comment at the moment.
Okay.
I was at the meeting, uh, when we discussed this. The. The idea of not having the four-way stop at Perkinsville was a couple of committee members felt like it was too close to the roundabout. Where you're just coming off the roundabout, you're picking up speed, you have to stop. And that it would be a minimal amount of time in the comparison of a twenty-four hour period. That crosswalks would be used at that intersection. And that way, truck traffic, whatever it might be, would not have to deal with stopping every time they went down there. Okay, so when it comes morning time when kids are crossing, uh, when it's summertime. Uh, or, you know, evening, then if they saw those lights flashing, they know they have to stop, they don't. So that was the argument there. Uh, myself. I, I really don't. I don't care either way. I think, uh, one thing that was brought up. Uh, well, my conversation with you, that Jack said if we're going to do the beacon lights, let's make them red, not yellow. So that that means stop. Rather than warning, you know, yellow beacons.
Believe there's some legal concerns with that as far as.
Yeah.
Regulatory stop signs and that sort of thing.
Okay.
I'd, I could research that, but typically the beacons are uh, amber, yellow and white. Red means stop, so we may have some violations of MUTCD policies. It's the Federal Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Oh yeah, I knew that.
So we try to follow those. So I'd have to research that if, and can't guarantee going red.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Annie? You wait, okay.
Frank, can you convince me or tell me why a four-way stop at One East and Perkins would be a bad idea?
Just non-engineering language right now, uh. Perkinsville Road has about thirty-three hundred cars a day on it. And One East has approximately half that number, sixteen or seventeen hundred. So you look at four-way stops when the traffic's more even. Right now, there's so much more traffic on Perkinsville. And it's still not enough to where there's no, you get enough time to get out onto Perkinsville with a two-way stop. So from a traffic engineer point of view, you look at four-way stops when the traffic numbers are more even than that.
Can I, can I reject?
Absolutely.
How's that any different than uh, Three North and One West?
I would have to look at the traffic counts to see how even they are. But that's, when you look at the, the warrants for a stop sign, that's what you look at is.
Okay.
Is the council, and also the number of pedestrians crossing affects that. But I think it's uh, typically over twenty an hour.
The traffic on One East is usually between seven forty-five and eight forty-five. And then in the afternoons, it's from noon to four, depending.
Right, and.
You know, going there in the middle of the day, there's hardly any traffic at all.
Right, you, you can look at twenty-four hours, eight hours, four hours are the peak hour as far as those, that traffic analysis.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, 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 that was a good question. Um. Is there any long-term financial deterrent from having a four-way stop there?
Financial? No, I don't know.
Maybe roads wear and tear, it accelerates the deterioration of that corner, which cost us, you know, uh. Five hundred thousand dollars more every three years, whatever, whatever the numbers are.
No. I understand what you're saying. The, the one potential and it's almost not worth mentioning, but I will, uh. The braking action of the trucks would, would put load on the road, but we're also looking. When we extend the water and sewer towards the highway of rebuilding that road section, so it'll be built thick enough to handle that impact. So the impact would be minimal on the, on the pavement there, um. And I think especially with the road getting rebuilt, should handle any sort of stop condition there.
And the last question, I, we had a dri, a bus driver that was here, I think at the last meeting, I can't recall. And I do remember, I thought he said there was concerns about the turn radius with the, you know, there's going to be an increased number. Was the road supposed to be widened right there in that geographic area?
The Perkins, the east, north side of the road gets widened, right?
Right, with the development, they're building their side of the road, so that'll be a lane wider. Uh, until the town comes on the, on the highway side, that. Top lane's going to be a right turn only, but when the town comes through, the intention is to widen out. The intersection on the west side to match, so it'll be a normal three-lane road with left turn lanes when, when everything's said and done.
I just think even if we save one life, a four-way stop is worth, it's worth the hassle. Oh, disregard what I said, because you didn't hear that yet.
I think I said that last meeting, so you can't steal my thunder.
You did.
Little plagiarism never hurts.
Having been in my experience for the twenty-four years I served with Chino Fire. I, I am in favor of a four-way stop and the flashing light, the crosswalk down by the dog park. And with red, if we can do red, or at least a sign that says when the lights are flashing, stop.
Yeah, if.
That's my, that's my leniency. I don't feel that any injury or anything is, any child is worth somebody's little.
Can we pull that back up real quick?
And also the, that, the four-way stop will also give some relief to One East in the mornings when people are trying to get out and they can't. Because Perkinsville's busy. They'll give that chance for that.
Yeah, and I, I did, I'm sorry, mayor.
That's okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, we did put a little picture that I stole off the internet.
I saw.
On the right side of.
Yeah.
What that crossing would look like with those beacons. The, the yellow ones are lit, but the white ones are there too, so. And, and you can get those uh, solar operated, as well as hooked to shore power or whatever you.
And is, and, and there would, would there be a sign saying when these lights are flashing, you need to stop or?
I think it would be pretty much just the warning sign. I can look into the manual to, to do it properly.
Well, you've got the pedestrian sign there.
Yeah, I just didn't know if they had to stop.
Yeah, and we would have uh, signs a few hundred feet ahead of that that says crosswalk ahead as well.
Okay.
On both sides.
Um, yeah, both directions.
Okay, your turn then. Do you want to wait still?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm happy. First and foremost, that the developer agreed with the four-way stop. I'm very grateful for that. Um, I like the idea of the pedestrian crosswalk. I'm not sure how unless there was an advanced notice. Look, in full disclosure, the four-way stop's going to delay my travels every day, four or five times a day, but it's worth it. I think in that intersection, thirty-three hundred vehicles a day, I had no idea down Perkinsville Road. But when you come down that hill. My concern is if we're going to put a crosswalk by the dog park, we need a warning sign, a couple warning signs. Instead of, you know, people like, okay, I'm going to cross the road here. And then people coming down the road, they're like, oh, okay. Too late, boom. You know what I mean? Like, I don't want to give people the idea that this is a safe place to cross. When vehicles coming down the hill or around the corner are all of a sudden like, oh, there's someone in the road, oh, it's flashing. So what do we have lined up that can let people coming westbound? It's mostly west or east, westbound, yeah. Westbound down Perkinsville Road that I'm concerned about, not so much east. It's coming down the cur, coming down the hill and around the curve and whatnot, and then there's a crosswalk.
Right.
It's right above Pinto Lane, it goes up.
Right, yeah, right where the dog park is, yeah.
Crosswalk right there.
Right, and that's.
You climb up the hill, not down the hill.
Wow.
You go down in the wash and then back up.
Well, see, I go down the hill. Sorry, my apologies.
I, I understood what you were getting at. And that's my concern with, and typically engineers' concerns with mid-block crossings in general is you're not completely stopped. Like a stop sign or stoplight would be. So there's an inherent risk to that. And that's the question, do you put in a crosswalk to warn people of the crossing there? Where there might be an implication of safety that's not there, or do you leave it blank? And there's risk associated with that as well. So it's not an easy situation either way. When you don't have a traffic light or something like that to cross at.
I think you hit the nail on the head when you said implication of safety, where, where it's not, because that's. A, a crosswalk right there, you know, that great place to cross for the dog park and access to the trail. Um, the walking path, but it is just an implication of safety, there's no.
And you normally see that at typically mid-block areas like this or trail crossings, a lot of times you see that where there's more trails. Because they tend to be in more rural areas where there's not corners and four-way stops and things.
I don't know if anyone else would um, like to discuss this, but, but if it could be something we would entertain. Um, as we get to, what are we doing, four phases of this development?
Yes.
Closer to three and four.
To entertain what?
The additional crosswalk, the crosswalk at the dog park. Well, I know.
The, the concern, my concern was not having anything there. Is if you don't, kids are going to come out that main entrance and they're going to cross anyway. With nothing.
Down Arden, okay.
They're going to cross anyway. When they cross there, they're going to be hitting a bar ditch. There's no sidewalk. So my thought was, kids on skateboards, their scooters, their bicycles. At least a good portion of them, I think, will choose to turn to the east, go down the sidewalk. To a crosswalk that then enters the park.
Okay.
Rather than just going across the street into the bar ditch, so.
Fair, yeah.
Her concern about the west tra, the westbound traffic is probably the more accelerated traffic. Would you agree for the dog park area?
Hmm, not necessarily. I'd also be concerned about the traffic co, if there's any traffic coming out of the subdivision, turning left.
Right.
Starting to accelerate and not seeing someone there as well.
But you know how some places use, I, I, I don't know what they call them, but they're like drunk bumps. That could be put in advance of the crosswalk, so people are alert. Okay, hey, I'm approaching an area where there's a crosswalk, heads up. I've seen that somewhere. I don't know where it is. There are little, the little white, like drunk bump things that you drive over.
Rumble strips.
Yeah.
What are they called?
Rumbles.
Rumbles, yeah.
Rumbles. Thank you, I learned a new word today. Rumbles, why, would that be appropriate? Is that, uh, uh. You know, so many in advance, so people know, hey, okay, I'm entering a zone where there might be a crosswalk act, activated.
I can look into that. I'm not familiar with using those as advanced warnings for uh, crosswalks. I have seen them like on rural highways for stop signs or railroad crossings. So I know what you're talking about. I just have to look into the particular details of that for this application. So I know what you're talking about, I'd just have to look into the particular details of that for this application.
One sec, I'm gonna give Tom, Tom, do you have anything you want to say?
Yes sir.
Tom, we can't hear you buddy.
Four-way stop at Perkinsville. Okay, I'll try again.
There you go.
I'm in favor of the four-way stop at Perkinsville and 1 East and a crosswalk well-marked with sufficient lead time that it's there down by the dog park.
Okay.
Okay, thank you sir.
And based on the size, one hundred and sixty-two units, there will be small children.
Most likely.
Anything else? You got something to say now?
I just see a big issue with this whole thing with all the commercial vehicles going down Old Hope Manor. Right now, there's thirty-three hundred vehicles, probably two thousand are our commercial vehicles.
Especially when there's an auction.
Especially when there's an auction, yeah. And I don't, it's, it's our, one of our busiest roads, if not the busiest road for commercial. And as Old Hope Manor grows, it's gonna be a big issue. I don't think a crosswalk's gonna help any or a four-way stop. That's more, we have bigger problems than that.
What's your solution?
We could just build a freeway to go over it, but.
That, actually, actually, I brought that up, is at that, at this Arlington here, just build a bridge over the road for pedestrians to-
They're rather expensive. So, and I don't know that it'll help in the near term, but in the long term, for the business park, the intent is to have 4 North be the commercial entrance for the business park. But that's an expensive project down the road.
It's gonna be both, they're gonna be using both roads.
Absolutely, and, and the concrete and gravel pit are still on Perkinsville.
Dun dun dun.
I have no solution right now, Jack.
Okay. Anything else? Tom, you have anything else?
No, sir, I'm done.
Okay. Are you gonna make a motion?
Give it back to Will. Oh, and-
Really?
If I could jump in on if you wanted one or either those stipulations with Aaron's permission, maybe just say stipulation one or two, would that be sufficient?
Sure. Would you also like to hear from the applicant? He is here tonight as well.
If he'd like to speak, surely. He's smiling like he don't want to.
Do we lose Andrew and Tom? Did we lose Andrew and Tom?
Oh, no.
Good evening Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Thanks for the time to speak here. We are not opposed to any of the safety measures that have been presented tonight, just from the developer's standpoint. We want to do the right thing and we want to make sure that the community is safe, their residents are safe. And everyone has the reasonable guarantee that they can get across Perkinsville and enjoy the facilities across the street. I am not an engineer, I won't pretend to be one. Frank and the traffic engineering and the committee and so forth are way more knowledgeable about these items than I am. So I won't comment on any of them, I'm gonna leave those, those stipulations up to you. I hope that there is a solution that has been presented here that would be acceptable so that we can get an approval of the project tonight and we can move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aaron, could you please back up to the, the proposals? There you go.
What'll it be gentlemen? One or two?
I like one.
One.
That's right, number two is not have a four-way stop.
Number one is this four-way stop with a marked crosswalk and warning signs. And number two is marked crosswalk warning sign and two other marked crosswalks.
Number one is the four-way stop and the crosswalk.
The one crosswalk.
One crosswalk or two?
Well, it's one littered crosswalk.
Right, if I can-
Can you clear this up first?
Yeah, number one is a four-way stop and then the crosswalk by the dog park with the lights.
Okay.
Number two is no four-way stop, but both crosswalks with lights.
Okay, I like number one.
I'm good with number one.
Number one.
Okay. Alright, here goes. I will, hold on, I'm reading the wrong. Yeah. Okay. I make a, I need my glasses, I'm getting old on y'all.
It's number two you wanna read.
Do what?
Start, start with number two.
Yeah, yeah. I'm with ya. Okay, I make a motion, we approve the Perkinsville 44 final plat phases 1, 2, 3, and 4 to divide approximately forty-four point three acres into one hundred and sixty-two lots with an average lot size of approximately seven thousand square feet with the stipulations outlined in Attachment A. And number one, developers shall install an always-stop intersection with advanced warning signs and marked crosswalks on the northern eastern legs of the intersection. Developers shall also install a marked crosswalk with the warning signs and rectangular rapid flashing beacons to line up with the drive entrance to the Chino Valley Dog Park. Lastly, the developers shall install signage so as to reduce the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour from Highway eighty-nine to Pinto Lane.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, what did I say? My apologies, twenty-five.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Got two seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, love.
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah, make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we are adjourned.
Good evening everyone.
Thank you.